Welcome to the special meeting of council dated April 9, 2019. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its meeting of April 9, 2019, as presented.
All in favor? unanimous. Declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Rise from in-camera meeting pursuant to section 239-2 of the municipal act.
So I have a motion that's moved by Councilor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council did hold an in-camera meeting this afternoon beginning at 4:00 PM pursuant to section 239-2I of the municipal act to discuss an item financial in nature that could interfere with contracts or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous. Reports of municipal officers and communications, acting CAO? Wolf has?
At the last meeting of council, I introduced the report wherein we were addressing the question of a strategic review for the organization. That was built on the directions from council of February 5, 2019, to release an RFP. As I said, there was one company that responded to the RFP. I put forward the suggestion that we could proceed with that particular company, or we can go break up the requirements and go back to RFP again. Counselors decided that they would like to interview the company and understand better what their credentials are, as well as their experience. That meeting was held on Thursday of last week, I believe, and it was, I think, an enlightening experience. The counselors that were present found it very interesting, as well as, I think, it helped them understand the breadth and scope of the challenges that the corporation is facing, as well as how other municipalities have dealt with things like this in the past. At the conclusion of the meeting, the suggestion was, or the recommendation was brought forward that it, council be recommended to proceed with this company. Company, of course, and name is Strategy Corp.
Questions? Counselor Ivanov?
I was really impressed with her, the teleconference we had with them. I thought they offered a lot of solutions and a lot of experience. The guys had all been with government of some sort, either Harper's Government, Mike Harris' Government, our, who else was there? They were, but they were, they all had a government experience, so they worked with government and knew how government worked, and I think that's, that helps us out a lot. They're conservative, they were all conservatives, which was kind of refreshing when you're looking at budgets and costs and things like that. So I was very impressed with the, with the group that were, that we listened to.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I mean, I have no questions about the qualifications. I guess my concern is that I, my priority lays with a dysfunctional organization that the town has, in my opinion, become. And in that meeting, I described it as a dysfunctional family. And that's where I think the prior, priority should be. Now, we have to remember that consulting firms, they appear all friendly and they're our best buddies, but they're in the business to make money. So I don't take everything they say at face value. And I think there are some things that we are going to pay them for that we could and perhaps could do better in-house than paying someone this money to do it. Having said that, I would like to see us proceed with the organizational review and not with the job description and succession planning part of the contract. Now, I don't know legally if we can do the first part with an option for them to do the second part. I don't know if legally we can do that, but that would be my suggestion if it's legal.
If I may, the, when we were speaking with the consultants, they also made it very clear that often municipalities, and we have done this as well, come forward with basically a shopping list of everything they wish to accomplish, but how to get there tends to be a little bit different than, in reality than it is in thought. And they put forward some very good suggestions at that teleconference, but I think key to that was, why don't we sit down with you and figure out what it is you need to do and how to do it, and will, we can go forward from that point of view. So they would be meeting with council to get your ideas, as well as what your priorities are, and they will draw from their own experience as well what actually works in such a circumstance, what are some of the pitfalls you might have, you need to avoid, and how to go about that. So in other words, let's ask them for their guidance. Let's be forthright in what it is that we want to accomplish, but let's ask for their guidance and using their experience and how we get there most expeditiously.
So Wolf, would that take place before we commit to a dollar amount with the consultants?
I believe that you would be committing to a dollar amount and then mapping that out exactly as you want, because certainly if I were the consultant, I would not commit to two, three days of speaking to people and then to be told, sorry, we're not really in for this. And I think that there is also a psychological aspect to it. You've committed to working with them, they've committed to working with you, now it's time to have honest discussions. And I think you will move the process further ahead if you are doing it that way.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, if I'm the consulting firm, I want you to spend $95,000 and I'm going to tell you, you need this, this, and this, okay? That's the way business works, and I don't blame them for that. They're doing their job. And I have a great deal of respect for consultants. My brother was a management consultant for many years, and I worked with him for a short period of time. But at the same time, I think as elected officials, we have to be careful where we're spending the money. And, you know, the buck stops with us, and I don't necessarily believe, and I'm not faulting them, I'm not saying it doesn't need done. I think what was laid out in this proposal needs to be done. I didn't necessarily agree with the order in which they wanted to do things. I have a different opinion, and I'm not saying I'm right. But at the same time, I don't think we need to pay them to do things that I, that I believe we could do in-house, maybe not as fast, but that we could do in-house. So, you know, for me, let's, and I know they had a different opinion on this, but I say, let's get the organizational line done first and go from there. I know they don't agree with me, and that's fine.
I certainly felt the same way, but I was corrected too. They, as the fellow explained, you kind of need to know what your priorities are, what your responsibilities are, what your requirements are, and how that, what your resources are, and from that you will get the information to get you to that. I think that's just part of the consultation process that is important. I cannot presume to say for them how they should go about it, and I think that the input is exactly what you're saying. I think that's exactly what they need to hear. What do we feel is so important to us? And have that discussion with them.
Counselor Rick?
So how specifically is this consultation organizational review going to differ? What is our expectations of how it's going to differ compared to the KPMG report?
The KPMG report was, for its space and time, pretty much a quick and dirty. It took seven different communities that KPMG felt were comparators to us, looked at how they provide their services, looked at how we provide our services, added a value-added component to it to make their own judgments, and put forward recommendations. It was focusing on a service efficiency or inefficiency. It was not about the organization. In fact, one of the recommendations was to review how the organization functions, look for different streamlined efficiencies and that, how was it? I'm sorry, I did put it in here earlier. Address process inefficiencies, including duplication of efforts, manual processes, potential internal control risks. Another one was to reduce the number of people reporting to the CAO under that particular structure. So in a way, this is building on that fundamental concept. You have a organization, and it does need to change. How do you wish to carry it forward? It's beyond our capacity as staff, I believe, to do that right now while doing the rest of the work at the same time, and I don't believe we have the required objectivity and distance to do that accurately.
So is there a way to jump this proposal and go directly to the issues that are strangling our staff?
I think that that, at least from my understanding, that was the gist of Mr. Matheson's message to the group on that teleconference. Come in, let's figure out what is the big ones and how are we going, how are we going to deal with that? Both some low-hanging fruit, as I think he referred to it, triage efforts, how are you going to deal with it so that you're in a position where you can build on it? I really do believe that's a conversation you need to have with that qualified individual.
Yep, so can, just seeking clarification, are we going for an operational review or organizational review? Because the request for proposal that we sent out was for an operational review. The item on the agenda today was operational review. I heard today organizational review on the radio. They're all very different, so what are we going for?
All of the above.
Should it be specific in what we're asking for then?
I think that that, again, goes back to the conversation with the consultant. He's, he was very clear in that teleconference, you will not achieve everything in one package. You are not in that position. You need to address it carefully and with some strategic thought. What is it that you need to put in place so you can function? One of the comments I think it was Stacy, Councilor White that made, I can't recall, so I'm sorry, but was, how do we get ourselves into a position where we can begin to handle things on our own again in the future? That is a goal in and of itself. So you are looking at, and this is from my own perspective, again, I defer to him, you're, you are looking at how does, how is your organization, how is a corporation organized? What is it supposed to be doing? How is it doing it? Who's doing it? When are they doing it? Why? How? And, sorry, in this case also where, because we have duplication across departments. So you're looking at both the operation and the organization to get to that point. If that was clear from there, sorry.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Yep, so for NR RFP, it was like, it puts out that deterioration in administrative processes and procedures can put the corporation at legal and financial risk. And reading other organizational reviews of other municipalities, they probably had the same moment, and they were told immediately to contract out a company to get your procedures and policies in place. So I don't feel comfortable spending $95,000 to spend additional money to deal with the situation. So how come, what issues have been brought forward to deal with some of these things? Like overtime, bank time, some of these items are pretty much, we need to contract out some work to get it done. The bank time, we need to follow through on our procedure to make sure that it's not carried over. It is specific that people can't carry over, but we aren't responsible for ensuring that gets done. That's within roles of council and staff. So I think there's efforts that can still be made to not have to spend that $95,000.
Yes, I believe so too. You raise the issue of bank time. Well, if the staff now are pulling in, in excess of what they're supposed to be working to accomplish what they're trying to do right now, and then add onto it, start doing an organizational review of your own, or start redoing this, redoing that, you're, you're only going to make that matter worse. We have taken a number of steps to try to stop that from happening, to the point where I've been actually calling staff and telling them not to work on the Saturdays. Go home, stay home. Some listen, some don't. It's hard to get mad at them when you're standing in the office telling them that on a Saturday, but that is some of the effects that we're, some of the steps that we have been taking. We have been putting forward ideas, at least at the budget table. Other opportunities were perhaps we could reduce what the staff are doing and looking at some contracting out opportunities. One that came forward this afternoon was to have an open house with contractors in June to see what could, what do they need from us to, to see if we could get them working for us on snow, snow plowing, snow removal, I should say, in Swastika or other areas coming up in 2020. So we are trying to take some of those steps, but your fundamental underlying of the entire corporation is not functioning. You can make all those smaller steps if you're not effectively changing what the corporation is at heart and how it functions. The, well, you're putting bandages on an open wound.
Could I just comment as well, Wolf? I mean, what's changed since the KPMG review was done? Well, first of all, the KPMG was more of a quantitative review than qualitative. Yes, there was some good suggestions in it, but there was a lot of statistical information comparing us to the other communities of similar size. Since that review was done, what's different from then and today? Well, first of all, we have a, pretty well have a whole different administration, senior administration group, a new council. Staff turnover has been pretty hectic over the last two, two and a half years, and as we know, 40% of our staff are going to be eligible for retirement in the next two and a half, three years. And we really don't have any succession plan in place. And I think that's the next step, from what Rick was saying, after the organizational review is to get that in place. During, or in the past few weeks, we were advised that we would be receiving 715,000 recent grant from the province, was to be directed towards improving efficiencies in the community. So this, I think, really does fit the bill. It's a lot of money. I don't question it, and maybe we can cut it back some, depending on what our needs are. But based on the fact that, I can't hide this, Wolf, you're doing the CAO job, economic development and helping out in parks and rec. We have Don Parcher filling in in the Works Department and a lot of other people doubling up in their duties. For us to take this on in-house, we will be sitting here three and a half years from now scratching our heads and gotten nowhere. We need some unbiased outside opinions, and I support going ahead with this. I'm hoping we can get it quite a bit less than this $95,000, but that's, that's my view. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of having outside eyes on, on, on this project. I'm aware of a number of problems in different departments, but in some departments, I ask, well, what, what do those employees do? And I don't really get an answer. And it's easy for people that work within one department to be able to tell you, and I'm not, I'm not saying me, I'm just saying in general, if, if Wolf was to ask them, what, what's not working, what's working? It's easy for them to tell you specifically about their job. But the hard part is to link their job, what they do on a daily basis, with the other jobs that it interfaces with in, in the corporation. I mean, in, you know, I, lots of people tell you how they could make their job better, but that might affect three other jobs by changing their job. And I think for that reason, it's important to have outside opinions on, on what needs to be done, because I don't think that we can do that. I don't think the staff can do that, because they're so tied up with their own, what's going on in their own departments. I just find that, I think it's a little too comprehensive for, for my liking. So, and, and, and like, if, if this deal is that we're signing on for $95,000 and as council, we go there and we say, well, we don't really need this and we don't really need that, like, I don't see, like, it's good they want to know what, what staff wants. It's good that they want to know what council wants, but if we go in there and say, well, we don't want part C and D or whatever, and we've already agreed to pay them $95,000, hey, if I'm the consultant, I'm going to go, hooray, we don't have to do that part and we're still getting paid $95,000. So this is, that's sort of where I'm at, Wolf. Like, I'm not exactly sure how this will work.
Honestly, I have to bring them in, and we can have that discussion. And it could also be that they come in, they take a look at what we do have in place and how we are working, and maybe they reach a totally different conclusion on us too, right? It's a two-way street. But let's definitely bring them in. It can probably be done over the telephone as to what our expectations are. I think that we will need some assistance in defining that, right, from council. I would prefer that they're here on the ground, and if that means that we have to cover the cost of the transportation, then that's a possibility too that you have to consider, right? Because it, it, it's just realistic. They don't want to get into a project that they can't handle or that won't work out. We don't want to get into something that's not going to work out. So I think it's, it's, it's good for both parties. I don't know if they will agree. I have to say that.
Just before Counselor White goes, Wolf, could you clarify? You talked to a number of communities that have used Strategy Corp, and what, what did you hear?
Across the board, it was good. There was, I think I sent out nine, and I've got six printed ones, and apparently there's two telephone messages, but I haven't had a chance to follow up today. It's, I'm just trying to figure one. During my tenure as a city manager for the city of Cambridge, we were faced with a similar scenario where we required a non-conventional approach to our organizational review. Strategy Corp provided excellent leadership and guidance in this regard while working closely with myself to ensure that the overall city mandates were achieved. They worked very well in engagement of city staff, as well as members of councils, in the plan development, and again, in the presentation of their findings. The organization review and resultant plan created a solid and sustainable organizational structure that permitted us to successfully deliver on the strategic goals and objectives set by council, as well as my mandate as a city manager for a high level of service delivery. The plan was well organized, responsive to the inputs of staff, which helped greatly in securing staff buy-in as we implemented a new structure. There was another one where the community had gone through something very similar to us. Let me just, so one municipality had used them and subsequently single sourced to them because they were that happy with their work. Doesn't mean that it's always that way, but... Short answer is that I was impressed with the work Strategy Corp did. It was done in a timely manner. Virtually every recommendation in the final report was approved by council and implemented, remains in place today. Longer answer, I had the same concerns you're describing. I was worried they would come into the city and make recommendations for a structure they had made for every other municipality that they had worked for, or something worse, provide me with a report that I have just, I could have completed myself and saved the consulting fee. As it turned out, they did a thorough job and made several unique recommendations that I hadn't seen elsewhere, and I certainly wouldn't have thought of myself or working alone with our current team. I'm not sure who your project lead is, but our project lead was Chris Loretto. He was on the phone. I would recommend them definitely. If you have any more questions, just call. That's Port Coburn and Frontenac, number of different communities. There was one community that said they were not happy with it, but they also pointed out that no staff that had been at, in place during the time Strategy Corp worked there were any longer with that community. So it's based on leftover feedback.
Counselor White?
So this is such a hard thing, because we know, we've, we've listened to what the major issues are for the corporation, including staff. We've heard it from the beginning, that they are so leveled with all other duties assigned that even their core duties are becoming an impossibility. So we definitely know that that is a major, major issue. On the phone call, the gentleman said they do, will not do job descriptions for us, that that was out of the scope. So this is my point. It's not about our vision as council anymore, about where we see the municipality going. We could say we're all going to drive floating cars. This is what our plan is. That doesn't matter. It's the functionality of the staff and, and the fact that we're burning staff out. That's the number one issue. Because whether we have this broad scope done, we're going to be no further ahead come September than we actually are now, because we need that specific help with the job descriptions and getting the organization organized. I have a real issue spending $90,000 to $95,000 and being no closer to helping our municipal staff be any better off than they are today. This is my biggest concern.
Could I ask Pam to come up? I think that we could address that issue together. Again, if we know what the organization is, and I'm, sorry, Rick, I'm kind of building on your idea, and I shouldn't really be pre-leading it either, but we're, if we know what the organization is supposed to accomplish, if we know what our key roles are, if we know how we're supposed to work, I, I, I think that that's when we will find the job descriptions we need to put into place. Right now, we couldn't do a job description on our own because, and I mean, that sounds silly. We could. It wouldn't be reflective of the realities, because every individual, I'm looking at one right now, that has three different hats on and can't find somebody to step in as a sub-forman, because he was flatly told, I don't want your life. So we could easily correct his job description, but what's the structure for the three areas of responsibility that he has? How do we weed that off and make it more efficient as an organization? I really felt strongly going into this that we had two parts, the organization and the HR side. I think I butted heads with Pam a few times, because she naturally is going to be focusing more on the HR. I really want to see that happen. But I also don't want to see somebody come in and say, here, this is yours, 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 and yours, now you're done, because we haven't learned a darn thing. We have to... We have to, we have to get, go, go through the changes, we have to learn how to handle the change. And I think that if, as a group, we're not, we're really not dummies. We seem to be pretty good at figuring out what has to be done and how to do it. Sometimes we get it wrong, we get it, get it right a lot of times too. We can handle a lot of the HR stuff. I don't think that even if we wanted to, we would get that done by Christmas. If we could figure out an organization, we need then to put into plan how we want to go about that side of it. Those guys out there, I mean, Donnie just did, uh, two, in one meeting, two different positions. Right, he, it's there, we can pull it forward. But what, what stops him is, what are all these positions supposed to be doing? Well, it's everything on this sheet of paper plus this. Then he can't. So, let's figure out what it is, my, my argument, and I'm kind of going with Rick on this, but I, I, again, I defer to the consultant. Well, let's organize this place based on what we need to do and how we need to do it. And then I think we've got the people to start pulling it together. That's just my feeling.
Stacy, just in response, I, I hear you. But do you actually think as a group that we can do this ourselves?
No, that's what I'm saying, instead of having this broad scope proposed and what came, uh, the RFP and what came back in the proposal, maybe we should target, instead of having this broader scope, we know what the number one is. I, I think we're all in agreement.
Uh huh.
Um, staff, administration and council. We know we need help with the organization and the job descriptions to get a, an understanding of, you know, that is way out of the scope, we need to hire someone, we need to contract, we need to... And that's what I'm getting at, that we definitely need this assistance, but maybe this is too broad for what our emergency, everything's emergency, but the stuff that we need to handle to make sure that our staff is open come September. Not being like, oh god, okay, now we have to wait another X amount of months or another RFP to go through to get us to help.
I, 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 I think that you're, if, again, you're saying very much what Rick was saying too, Counselor Owens. But let's meet with them and figure out what, again, my perspective of what's critical, what your perspective, what is it as a, from an outside perspective is absolutely necessary that could be done and how quickly? And let's be realistic about it. Like, I, I don't want to see them up here for six months because they're trying to do everything. I'd much rather say, okay, you're here for two months or whatever and you're going to put this in place and it's going to be solid. Well, okay, that's the agreement, then take it back to council, is this what you want to accomplish? You'll be part of that discussion to get there, but you're setting that parameter. And if, you know, Strategy Corp, at least on that telephone conversation, and they certainly were very reasonable. And I think that they would flat out tell you that, no, that's not what we want to do or that's not what we can do, or that's just not of value to us. It is unfortunate, but they do come from far away, right? And I would assume that a company like that has probably a geographical area that they work within because they can make their dollar on it. Experience in Kirkland Lake is that often we're just outside of that scope. Now, they, let them be honest about it. What are we looking for, do they have the skill sets? I believe they do. But let, let's work that out with them. Otherwise, I think that we could bury ourselves in exactly what happened with the RFP. And I, I'm not falling for it, I wrote it, but I was putting it down as, these are all the things we need to do. But what I couldn't do was see which one is most important to do first. That has come through from the learning experience of going through this. That's why I don't want to repeat that mistake, I want them in, let's, let's say, what, or someone like that.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, like, I'm all in favor of, of, of bringing in a consulting firm and I'm very comfortable with what I heard. And in, and I know I was kind of tough on consulting firms earlier, but it, it, to... Consulting firms have two things that keep them in business. One's their principles, education, and the other is their reputation. So, um, it's the reputation one that's the most important for most communities. And if a consulting firm damages its reputation by doing shoddy work, they don't get hired again, because that goes out pretty fast. What, what Wolf read to us earlier just confirms my gut feeling that these are truly, truly a reputable firm. But I would like to see the contract pared down. Like, I, I think it just has too much in it. If we can get it pared down to a certain degree where it's still economic for them to do it, like, because we are talking distances. But consulting firms too, like, my brother worked all over the world, right? That's built into their contract and they know where Kirkland Lake is. So, that's going to be built into their price. If we can get it pared down and, and, you know, to, to what, I think it's pretty obvious what most of us think is, is the important things. I think this would be a good firm to go to. I'm a little leery about the size of what we've asked them to do and the price. Like, and then I'm not saying that the price they, they quoted was unreasonable. It may be very reasonable for, for that amount of work. I just don't think we need it all.
So, what I'm hearing is, open the discussion with them, say that we are interested, but we want to know both from their perspective and ours, what it is can realistically be done on a priority basis that we can all agree on. And let's see where it takes us with that. This is correct?
I, I, I'll chime in with the discussions and I appreciate all the, the contributions from council. I think it is a, a big investment, but it's worth it for our staff and for the organization long-term. I think my opinion is the organizational review will guide everything else. The organizational structure, the HR component, the operational structure. The, the job descriptions, in my opinion, that's very easy to do. I would like to make everyone comfortable that's not a problem. The problem is the reporting structure and who has responsibility for which individuals and which part of the organization. And that is where it becomes critical in terms of overwork and lack of time to dedicate to certain resources. So, I think it is imperative to have an outside view, have the assessment, pull in the, the input from council and staff to determine what in their view and their experience is the most important priorities. Bring it back to us and council decides what the priorities are, whether they're all in 2019, whether it's spread over a few years, whether part of it's done in-house or not. Maybe that's a discussion as well, but I think it's, that's my opinion.
Casey?
Just, I want to make sure that this is done, like, if we delay this, I'm not sure if that's where we're going with this. I don't think it's the best move for the town right now. I think this needs to be done. Yes, it's a lot of money, but if we ended up hiring people to do this in-house, we'd spend probably the same amount of money or close to it to be able to get to the same result. So, by hiring this company, we have access to all the expertise at, in one package deal. And I don't think we should be delaying this just based on the cost or the scope of it. Like, I've read some of the reports they've done for Urtertown, like, the one from Brockton, the one you shared with me on the weekend. And it's, it's great work. But I want to make sure that whatever we implement here is really tailored for Kirkland Lake, not for a city that's in southern Ontario that doesn't have the same reality or the same challenges that we face up here. I, I truly believe this should be done as soon as possible to be able to get the, a report in and start implementing these changes that has to be done before the end of the year.
Counselor Ivanoff?
One of the concerns I heard, I repeated last week often, was succession planning. And, and now we're talking about eliminating that as part of this report, which, I, I know last week it was, that was a priority. I think also when we listened to these people from Strategy Corp, they talked about the budget that they were going to work with. And that wasn't based, that everything that was on that request for a proposal was, was going to be completed to our satisfaction because there's things that couldn't be done based on the budget. There would be stuff that just, they were going to do the priority stuff and then there'd be stuff that we'd have to handle in-house, e- even though we were spending whatever, ninety thousand dollars. I think that was made pretty clear when we listened to them on last Thursday, that they would do as much as they could with the budget that, that was provided. And after that, there was going to be things that were not priorities set by council or by staff and that was going to be things that we'd have to work on ourselves or would have to...
Cost plus.
Cost plus, I guess, if we wanted to. But I don't think, I think they were going to do everything that was, that we considered a priority that was going to be taken care of. So, that's kind of the, the sense that I had when we spoke to them. I don't know if that, if somebody else had a different sense of what was happening last Thursday, but I think that's where I, I felt that we were just giving them, here's what we want to get done. Those are the things you have to work on based on what council and what, what staff was, was going to request of them. And that there were going to be things probably that you'd have to spend maybe three or four hundred thousand dollars if you wanted a complete review of it, or maybe, maybe twenty thousand, or I don't know what it, what the amount was. But I didn't get the sense that, that everything, the budget was going to allow us to have everything completed, just our priorities completed, so I...
I know where, I hear you, what you're saying. The impression I got of what Wolf had in the RFP was what they would work on. And if there's anything extra, like this, we talked a bit about succession planning, that seemed to be like an add-on. But for what was in the RFP, my impression was that's what you get for your ninety-five thousand. But anything over and above that is cost plus. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I know when, whenever, whenever my brother, and he owned a couple of his own companies as well as working for KPMG early in his career, when he bid on a contract, they were specific things that he had to deliver on. And they, um, he had to deliver on them to get paid. Now, often his contracts were split up in a third, in thirds in terms of payment. And they were, and a lot of his contracts were with provincial, with the province of Ontario and the federal government. And they were split up in, in thirds, the payment, based on, you know, one-third start up to cover the cost, one-third when the project was so far along, and then one-third a year later or whatever. So, I don't know, like, we're talking a few years ago, so this, this whole concept of one-third, one-third may not be something that's, that's done anymore. In, in terms of, Casey, the reason I supported having a special meeting tonight is because I want to get it, it done. The sooner the better. We need to deal with the situation we have. So, that's...
Can I add something to that? I read after, I came down here last week and I got the actual copy of what Strategy Corp submitted to the town. And in there, it's very clear what we're paying for and when it has to be done. So, I think your concern there would be if, I don't know who's read it, but if you go through it, you'd be able to say, well, this has to be done by a certain day and you know exactly what you're paying for. So, that's very, it's very clear, so I, I feel comfortable on that one.
I, I guess Wolf was, the response to the RFP, did it match up with what you were looking for?
It did, but, uh, again, I just want to caution that in our telephone conversation, they were very clear. Let's sit down and figure this out. You, we, for, for the price tag and for what you've asked for, here's the scope of how we'll get there. But as we talk to you, you may find that you want to put more priority here, more priority there. They're flexible to that and that's critical. Because otherwise, you could be, okay, that's all we're going to do is pay ten bucks for that piece. That's what you're going to get for ten bucks, even though you could have got, you know, maybe it's more important. So, I think that that dialogue with them is exceptionally important. And if that affects the flow chart and the deliverables, it comes back to council before you sign off on it anyway.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, and, and that was one of the things I found attractive about this consulting firm was that when we talked to them, and I'm hoping they're good on their word, they wanted for us to define and staff to define what the priorities are. And they would work to addressing those first. So, in the scope of the contract, maybe initially we thought it was organization, right? And then we sit down, we have our discussions and we realize it was something else. So, then something else becomes a bigger piece of that ninety-five thousand and organization becomes a smaller part and other things become... And quite frankly, I think that's the right, way, right way to approach it. Because how can you sit there in your office in Ottawa and say, okay, this is going to be the priority for Kirkland Lake because this was the priority in Cambridge, right? And, 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 and I think that's, like, they'll address, I, I haven't read the contract, but I'm assuming they would address all the issues. But the priorities and where the bulk of the money would be spent would be determined by their discussions with us and staff. And, and, and to me, that's the right approach to take. I just, I'm not sure that we need the whole thing done, but, you know, I'd, I'd rather go with this company and I don't want to pay the ninety-five thousand because I don't think we need everything that's in the, was in there. But I, I, I'm comfortable with going with this company.
Counselor Adams?
Well, we're changing the conversation to like, it is a big scope and it's been admitted that even the RFP was pretty big. What came back to the town was the project was too big for a lot of these companies to deal with. But if we're talking about changing our scope, we could probably get that price down by issuing, reissuing the RFP. And we can also implement some of these recommendations from the other guys that have been put out there from Strategy Corp to other municipalities, municipalities that you've contacted. I'm pretty sure they'll be happy to share. And you look at the common themes, but for ninety-five thousand dollars, for a scope that's way too big, identified by many companies, I think we reissue and still implement some of the recommendations from other municipalities, equipment sharing. If our managers are spending a lot of time doing grant writing, contract out the grant writing to get that off their plate and let them manage instead of write, right? There's, there's tons of recommendations that are out there. And in the meantime, we can get that cost down instead of settling in for ninety-five, ninety, which is that giant scope, and then we can have competition.
To be clear, the, the fact that the project is big, I'm just reading from the report previously, they were also not sure that they could attribute the necessary human resources, especially as the bulk of the work would take place over the summer, a considerable distance from home offices. The lack of northern experience was outside their core business competencies. Coordinating strategic partners with other consultancies to meet the need for municipal HR, organizational development competencies were challenging. Also, they wanted to know what the budget was so they could bid directly to it. So, there were other reasons. I caution against thinking that recommendations for improvement are on the supermarket shelf. There'd be many things that we, that we could look at. I, I think that's great, you had sent around a report previously and Ed had fantastic ideas. But let's be specific to Kirkland Lake. That's exactly where you would have as a previous con- That's exactly where you would have, as a previous comment was, well, that's, it worked in Cambridge, let's just do it. Well, no, you would, you would fire a consultant for having that attitude, but we have to be careful not to bring it upon ourselves either. We have done that in the past. I'm not being, uh, uh, dismissive because I've seen where we thought too, okay, and you saw this in the KPMG report. Well, this is just an easy, uh, uh, suggestion that's worked everywhere else, let's do it. And then, you know, it'll look like it's even working. But it's those guys out there that are going to be struggling to try to put that square, you know, round pig into a square hole, and that's not accomplishing anything. Let them look at what you have here in Kirkland Lake. Be specific to it. You'll get a lot of the other ideas that can fit, sir.
Councillor White?
Sorry, bringing up the KPMG report, I think this council is very concerned that this is yet another, um, consultant that we're going to pay for, where their recommendations will sit on a shelf. Uh, since 2013, we've paid, the corporation has paid for at least five that I could find online. Um, start, uh, the assessment management, uh, assessment management plan, uh, community economic development strategic plan, the official plan, KPMG report, and POMAX. There's five. These are just the pages of recommendations. It's eighty-five pages out of four hundred and twenty-eight. That's just recommendations. We didn't in the past hear about them often once they were accepted. We didn't get to, to have that transparency of where we sat with those recommendations. Um, and we've gone through them, some of us have gone through them because they're available online. I don't want to pay ninety thousand dollars for something we'll never hear about again that will not help anybody. That is my number one concern.
I don't think that'll happen with this council. Recently, we went through the KPMG, uh, G report, and, uh, I think you'd be surprised. There's a lot more that has been done from that KPMG report. Uh, some things weren't done. Then we had the Fire Master Plan, but, uh, it's up to us as a council to make sure that some of these things are done. Like the Fire Master Plan. We've got a fire chief that's running us behind off, but we've done nothing to help him. So, uh, we can have all the consultant reports we want, but if we don't, uh, chip in and, and provide some leadership, they will be gathering dust, and that, that is a fear. I, I understand that. I don't think that will happen with this council. I, I firmly believe we want to do what's best for the community. We have tons of challenges. There's no question about it. And it's a hell of a lot of money to spend. We want to get it right. Uh, I suggest maybe that we go back to, uh, uh, Strategic Corp and, uh, have another, uh, telephone, uh, conference call with them. Uh, and clarify exactly what we want and see what their feedback is before we make a decision.
Isn't that what the bylaw asks for, like, negotiate with Strategic? Isn't that the whole purpose of this?
That may be the case.
The acting chief and mission officer be permitted to negotiate with Strategy Corp for strategic operating review for the corporation of town in Kirkland Lake? That's a rea- that's, so I interpret this as a negotiation, so we're not delaying this. We're going through it right now to make sure that this gets done, and it, and, yeah.
So this would be the process of getting to this point to come back here?
Yeah, you're focusing on execution, but I'm focusing on the negotiate part.
Councillor Owen?
I hate, like, heck, spending ninety-five thousand dollars, but I hate, like, heck, leaving the, uh, the staff in the, in the situation that they are right now. The important thing for me is that we have a company come in here and develop a plan specific to Kirkland Lake that is implementable, if that's a word, that we can implement, okay? If we pay ninety-five thousand dollars and don't get a report that we can implement, then I'm gonna, I, no, I mean, that, that just can't happen. We have to pay. And, and you know what? The qualifications of these guys are, are beyond. Um, I don't have a problem with that, but we have to, we can't go back and face the ratepayers and say, we just paid for another consulting plan, and we've decided not to put it in place, or it, it, we looked at it and it doesn't work, right? We have to be ready to proceed with the recom- not all the recommendations, of course, that's up to us. But we have to be able to, to get value for this ninety-five thousand. And I think a lot of the value for the ninety-five thousand will be long-term, okay? Morale's going to go up, production will go up, people will be more efficient on their jobs. They're going to be happier to come to work every day instead of dreading coming to work. And, and I think that's going to be a long-term process, so, I mean, I'll pay. I, I'm all in favor of paying the ninety-five thousand if that's what it costs, but I'll be on. Like, we have to have something we can implement.
And if I could say, Councillor White, your points were well taken, but stay engaged. How many of those studies do you refer to where there was no council participation? POMAX even had meetings. There was one person, two, sorry. And that's i- if, the, the other point is to, uh, Councillor Owens, a comment. You can get twenty pages of recommendations. It's on you to determine which ones actually fit at which time. Because circumstances will change from the time that thing hits your desk to the time you're, you're considering it. And again, what is, uh, uh, what, what fits now might be a little bit different later on, but stay engaged. The worst thing you can do, uh, to me anyway, or to staff is, um, here, okay, great. Go get that report done, and then we don't really want to hear about it. We don't really want to see it anymore. And that is just, uh, that's wrong. So.
Councillor Owen?
And I think this council has proven it many times in the past four months or so that we are involved. We, there's meetings galore that we go to, we ask questions galore. So I'm not afraid that this report's going to sit on the shelf and not be implemented, or I, I think we've proven that many times in the past four months there, that we are involved and we want to see this community succeed.
Uh, I agree, uh, Councillor Owens, and I also will say, our senior management team are on the same page. Without question, uh, we've got to make their lives easier. Uh, there's a lot of stress, uh, being put on them. We have their buy-in, I know that. So are we agreeing then that we will, this does say, uh, negotiate? Yeah, look.
So I have a motion that is moved by Councillor Rick Owen, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero three nine being a bylaw to authorize Mayor Kirk to execute a negotiated contract with Strategy Corp for a strategic operational review, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. Okay, recorded votes go in alphabetical order, so I'll ask Councillor Patrick Adams, are you yea or nay?
Nay.
Next is, sorry, I didn't. Eugene, Councillor Eugene Ivanoff?
In favor of.
Okay, Councillor Rick Owen?
In favor.
Councillor Casey Owens?
In favor.
Uh, Councillor Dennis Perrier?
In favor.
Councillor Stacy White? And Mayor Pat Kiley.
Yea.
So we have six yea's and one nay, so the motion is passed.
Okay. Good discussion. Adjournment?
It's moved by Councillor Stacy White, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier, that council adjourned special meeting of April ninth, twenty nineteen.
All in favor? unanimous?